Didn't matter, it was strategic planning last week.
Given that it's you, I think we will bring the work session to order here. I just wanted to let everyone know that today's meeting will be recorded. And is anyone here interested in any public comments? Okay, I have anything under unfinished business. So that being said, we will move to new business. And the first item on new business is the Warren Works Initiative. So I'm guessing our guests today are here to speak on that.
We want to talk about trees that were dropping bombs on the sheriff's car, actually.
I'm glad that the presentation includes jokes.
That's okay, yeah.
Certainly. Always. Great.
Well, thank you very much for making time for us today to join this meeting and talk about a topic that's become very near and dear to us of what the WCCBI. And, you know, we took a look a couple of years ago at, you know, the direction of our organization. And in light of the comprehensive planning process that the commissioners and the city were embarking on, we thought it would be a really good idea for the WCCB act to follow suit and do the same thing. And in doing so, we really wanted to ensure that we aligned ourselves in purpose with the city and the county. And along with the needs of our own members in terms of how do we help create communities in Warren County? That would be a great place to live, work, and play. And ideally support population growth, which we feel is one of the number one key issues. Regardless of how you approach that issue, from what perspective, whether you're in business and industry, whether you're in government, we just felt that that was a key issue. Sean and I and this team have had several conversations. But we came to two conclusions. One was community development would help create a platform for economic growth. An economic development approach would also help create a great platform for community development. And so we look at that as our two main platforms as we look at Warren Works. We took the Warren Works playbook from Kane, Pennsylvania, the Kane Sparks Initiative, where they looked at their community and they said, if we wanted to be attractive and active and really look at how do they grow their population and make Kane a great place to live, work, and play. We think Warren County can follow in a similar fashion, but we're a different community or group of communities. And we feel like this is, will require our own labor in terms of an approach. And that's really today what we'd like to talk to you about. If you have a copy of our presentation, and on the first page, and we talked a little bit about the WCCB admission statement. And we're about leading Warren County to a community and economic excellence. And that's been our mission statement for a long time. And that goes to, we believe that excellent communities and excellent economies are so closely tied together that you can't deal with one if you don't have deal with the other. You know, as a business entity, as a, I'm sorry, as a membership organization of business entities, you might think, well, how do you come by a claim around community development? And when you look at all the work that the WCCBI has done over the past several years, so much of it is about community development. Trails at Jake's Rocks, Elevating Nonprofits, which has been a multi-year program now that we've been running to help ensure that nonprofits get professional training to make their operations more efficient. The NRPC, the St. Bond Venture Jewel Enrollment. We feel like we actually lead with community development projects first and pretty much always have. And economic development is in our DNA, but we've always been about the community first. And as we think about that, we know on the next page that there are several challenges facing Warren, the communities of Warren County, we've got a population, by the way, none of this is new news, right? So it's population decline, constraining budgets and services, community infrastructure. How do we become a community of choice? We're all trying to define that and strive towards that, but it's a disjointed effort because community's been defined and chopped up in several different ways, which has hampered our teamwork. We know that we have redundancy in many areas, and so community efficiency is challenged. And when we talk about Warren, we don't have consistency or alignment on what does Warren mean? It's, if you're from the city, it means one thing. If you're from the county, it's something different. If you're from the township, it won't be different yet again. But it's really hard pressed by any person in Warren County who can say their lives only revolve around one element of that community. You know, for me, as, as, you know, a person representing Whirly Drink Works, you know, I have over 300 teammates. You know, for me, community is defined by where all of our people live. Where do they call home? You know, we're, even the Whirly operations extend, you know, far beyond just one element of community. So for us, it's, we look at community as the greater sense of how we all come together. So for us, it's about becoming a community engagement and how do we address the fabric of life here? Well, we wanted a way for the comprehensive plan to be finished and the city plan. And we saw several areas of very real overlap. And when we spoke to Mackinaw Engineering, as you all know, they, they love the idea of what Sean will talk about in a moment and around Warren Works. They love the idea of how do we align, how do we work together so much that they, they took our visions of, let's say, our insights around community engagement working together and made a part of the comprehensive plan for the county. And elements of it are going into the city's comprehensive plan. But we saw certain areas around catalytic actions, business development, preserving assets, a healthy economy, the high quality of life, and a beautiful place to visit. And hopefully make your home. We saw those as areas that the WCCBI, working with the county, working with the city, and Warren Works could uniquely lead that effort. Because a lot of these endeavors don't fit in governmental organizational structure. A lot of these efforts can be enabled by city and county government. But it's really hard to find who's responsible for the healthy economy. What office really owns that? Or the high quality of life? Who owns business development and catalytic actions and things like that? And we think that's, that's that gray area where people can come together as a community movement. But it's really hard to assign any particular department to own those kinds of activities. So we think this is a generational opportunity. Because all of these plans have come together at this time. We think this is the right moment to really take a step back and say, how do we all work together? And see that future, that shared future vision that we wish to create? And then work on that and own it all at the same time. And with that, I'd like to have Sean talk about what that vision could look like and how he could turn that into action.
I want to just, that's pretty warm, but here's a, it's a little bit bigger.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a little bit bigger for the visually challenged.
Our old eyes.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't have the cheater glasses on today.
So, you know, Andy brings up a lot of great points. And thinking about how we kind of came to this, this vision. You know, this ultimately was a way that we could bring all of those parties together. Aggregation, right? Thinking about all the smart people we have across the city and the county, the visitors bureau, and the chamber, et cetera. And no shortage of ideas, right? I mean, everybody has, in a lot of different ways, brought a lot of fantastic things to the table. This was really about how we can turn strategy to action, right? How can we remove some redundancy, get people working together, create, I'll say some, some framework, right, that we could all operate together within? And honestly, start moving some of these big things forward. You know, to Andy's point around strategic planning and so on, we did not want to discount all of the effort, right, that's gone into trussel to trussel or the marketing stuff that's been looked at before. Or the county and the city strategic plan. But now that you've got to that point and you have the ideas ready to go, what kind of framework can we build to drive it all forward? So just, just starting with the upper left there, you know, as Andy talked about, Warren Works is really about the WCCBI providing some kind of aggregation, right? Providing some kind of oversight and direction to this. You know, everybody owns it, but nobody owns it from this standpoint. And these guys kid me all the time, but I was a cartoon geek when I was a kid. You remember the League of Justice, the Hall of Justice, where we had all the superheroes around the table? And you all came to the, to the table with some common vision or some criminal to overcome. And they laid it on the table, not they went and got it solved. Jokingly, that's, that's how I kind of see this all working, right? Please don't get caught up in those five circles around you, right? That could be anybody. That could be the hospital. It could be PA Wilds. It could be anybody. That's part of what we'll talk about next, the next steps. This was just meant to give you a visual idea of what we're talking about. But the WCCBI will act as that aggregator, that facilitator. You need somebody at the top that can kind of keep it all together. That being said, they don't particularly own the entire thing, right? Each person that would have a seat at the table would have equal ownership and stakeholder powers and so on, the way that we're putting it together. If you look in the bottom left, all of these, as we know, go after similar funding, right? But when we think about the key initiatives that came within Warren Works, we think about how can we go after the funding collectively, right? And so each person kind of, you know, going out maybe in the wrong direction or, or, you know, the redundancy involved in some of these multiple ways we go after stuff. This is about shared resources, right, creating efficiencies and removing all those redundancies. Over in the bottom right, this isn't about, you know, giving up the purpose of the organization. So we're not asking everybody to give up what their day jobs are, so to speak, right? But if you're going to have a seat at the table and become staple of living Warren Works, there's going to be an expectation of, of a certain amount of time or resources and dollars dedicated to getting this stuff done. Again, it's about Andy's point, taking strategy and turning it into action, right? So we didn't want people to think, as an example, that if the Warren County Visitors Bureau is involved, that the funds that they get for tourism, as an example, have to be dedicated to Warren Works. They're going to keep their own budget, their own strategic plan and so on. But as you can see with the different colors, each person would be dedicating a piece to trying to get those initiatives done. One, one, one Warren, one vision. In the upper right, and I think this is critical, and what we see really is a first step once this is formed. And again, we'll go through the next steps on the next slide, but we really need a common, a common brand platform for Warren County. What are those key attributes that make us different? What makes us better? Why Warren over somebody else, right? And then for us to then take that platform and across business, nonprofits, city, county, visitors bureau, anybody that has a stake within Warren Works, doing it consistently, right? That's the whole idea about driving a change of perception is doing something consistently. We just have not built a platform to build around. So that would be a really, a big first step within the Warren Works framework. We also see the toolkit beyond that. Once it's built and we get things aligned, how are we going to actively market it? And then how can we get those nonprofits, businesses, and other entities on board so that they really know what the brand platform is? I'll pause there. Any, any questions on this? I look around, I don't know. This, this is not brain surgery, right? This is not, this is nothing that really honestly hasn't been talked about in a number of areas before. I think where we are from the WCCBI standpoint is now is a perfect opportunity to take advantage and put some emphasis together. Because we don't want to see us missing out on opportunities. With all the great things that have been going on, the things identified with the plans, we think we could put some things to action. So I'll, I mean, I'll pause. Any, any questions from anybody?
Was this, I believe this was also part of the comprehensive plan, if I remember correctly. Did that get injected as part of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, yeah. And Mackin, you know, we worked with, is it Brandy Jim? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Brandy.
She looked at our, you know, concept, you know, city and the county plan. And she actually put what she felt was the overlap together for us. We had a document of where and the place that she thought we could be effective. And all those areas that, let's say, the county and the city melded kind of together.
She also commented that she might have seen an idea like this where county and city could come together. Usually their work is in a silo with one entity or another. And thought it was a great opportunity to, you know, forge something a little different where it could really have alignment and synergy.
Kane, you know, Andy brought up Kane Sparks, super successful program, if anybody's familiar with the things they've been able to accomplish down there. But we weren't naive enough to think that, you know, Warren could be as simple as that, right? 3,000 population, one county, one whole town, you know, the whole deal. So Warren Works, you know, we're thinking through those complexities and trying to build something at a scale that fits Warren County. But conceptually, it's very much the same. So, next page really just knocks from our perspective on what we think are our next steps. You know, we're having conversations now. We met with the city task force. We met with the city council last Monday?
Yeah.
We're here with you today. We have other meetings that we've had across the community to introduce the concept. The idea from there is really define those partners, right? Who's, who's going to have a seat at the table and be a stakeholder, be a part of Warren Works? Really identifying the line, our goals. One of the things that Mayor Warren brought to the table was, you know, we're going to need to have a clear understanding of the organizational design, right, the business plan behind this. How does it all work, you know? Sean, at the end, you guys can do a, you know, fancy piece of paper and talk through it. But in the end, what are the rules of engagement? How's it going to be charted? So we're in the process now of, you know, defining and working through the partner definition, but also putting together that business plan, those, those rules that I talked about. And then from there, again, we, we have an RFP that we've put out to nine, Jim?
Yeah.
Nine different agencies ranging from several that are out of town, Pittsburgh area, Buffalo, Rochester, so on, and have those in hand, thinking through next steps. And that first big project would be that branding initiative. Helping us sort of go through the process of discovering, building that platform. And then how would we take all of that and amplify going forward for the county?
Now, is the RFP specific to branding and the communication plan? Is that what that is?
It is. There's, you know, there's gray in that a little bit. There is, it's a branding exercise that will also include a marketing plan on top of it, right? So it's, yeah, so it's one thing to develop really who you are, what you stand for and all that. But then how do you make it active? How do you use that then to perpetuate Warren County? And that's, that's also part of it. And then the last thing is, and it's kind of where I started, full circle, coming back to Andy, but there's no shortage of ideas. The things that have been identified through the chamber, the townships, the county, et cetera. Then it's just a matter of getting the partners aligned, talking through what key initiatives make the most sense, prioritization, and then kind of off we go. So it's, it's, it's moving along very well. Jim, I don't know if you or Brad would make any comments, but...
The only comment I wanted to add was to, we really need to clearly state the objective of this and manage the expectation from the partners who will be coming around the table. This is not in any way, shape, or form a move by the WCCBI to come in and become the project manager and director and owner for every project that comes up across the county. There's no way we could ever position ourselves to be able to do that. But rather be aggregator and hoping to share resources across the county and get people who know each other but don't necessarily converse with one another to talk about where they're going and share ideas and resources and means of getting things done and mutually supporting and making sure that we're not conflicting with one another. Couple that I see right, right now, in November, there's a deadline for fair share of grant funding. So it's kind of like the year marks every year where the year mark comes out and you have a very short period of time to put together a request for funding. I don't know we've ever had a conversation across the county to say, who, who's putting in for a year mark with V T Thompson? Who's putting in for a fair share of grant? So let's make sure that we're aware of those and we're not competing for the same few dollars that are available. And that we can mutually support and kind of prioritize the projects across the way. So it's not, I think the only thing that concerns me a little bit is that there's a perception that if we're here from the WCCBI, your problems are solved, and, you know, we're going to take over everything. You just ask us, tell us what you need and we will bring it forth. So, I mean, that's not the idea strictly to be that conversation. We, yeah, so I think, you know, clearly if the community is too large, where any one entity or endeavor could corral every initiative and ride shotgun over that, right? But what we would say is, we do want to program manage Warren Works and help create within this structure an ability to help people come together, to do a lot of their own problem solving, but to help set them up for success where we can and where we're invited. And so you can see quite a few opportunities where, you know, we might learn something. You know, for instance, with the elevating nonprofits, we know that we could help a nonprofit be more successful. We can't go make a nonprofit be more successful, but we've created a platform where they can come, they're welcome, and, you know, there's a, there's a great train from an outside resource that is, is driving that process. We can facilitate that. We can make it available, but, you know, we can't make nonprofits more successful, right? That's probably a pretty good analogy for some of the things that Jim is talking about. But as we look at, you know, the comprehensive plans, strategic plans, and what we're trying to do, we also do want to ask ultimately that you invest in us as, financially invest with us to help enable us to take on that role that, as we said earlier, isn't really defined in organizational structure in government. But these are outcomes that the plan wants to see happen. We're prepared to help drive that process and lead it, to help make those things a reality. And to work with you as partners to ensure that our focus is on the right things, that there's an accountability element. We know that you have constituents that, you know, take a keen interest in how money is spent, how resources are allocated. So we're not asking for a blank check. We're not asking for carte blanche. But we are asking for partnership with you to work on this process. And for you to consider us as your agency to manage this and make it happen.
So conceptually, as you look at Warren Works, do you see that as a board? Do you see that as a task force where each one of these individuals are contributors?
Yeah, use whatever, I mean, use the word stakeholders, right? Yeah, absolutely. Each one would have a say in how work comes in, right? Initiatives that come in, prioritization, what pieces they, within their own entity, would take on as part of those initiatives. Yeah, absolutely.
You know, because some of those, as, as work comes in, you know, there, there might be a big community initiative around, you know, pick a topic, right? And community has to come together to address that. And it, it might involve half of the members there and half of them not because they have no part in it or possibly no interest. But they, they might have resources that can support that. And so we think that there's a certain kind of fluidity or dynamic around this that will become more and more evident. At the end of the day though, we think, you know, there are certain entities that will always be present, like yours, ours, the city, around a lot of these common goals. Because we're the ones charged with helping ensure that these things actually come to pass and happen.
And is your intention then to also reach out to the ANF, the Visitors Bureau, and the school district?
We're kind of making the rounds.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, those are just conception, some of them.
Sure.
You know, PA Wilds, the Warren County Foundation. I mean, there's a number of people that have either expressed interest through some of the chamber conversations or people that, people that we think are essentially being part of this.
Any other questions or comments that maybe issues with that?
I would just briefly say that I recall in my conversation a few years ago about ISO because you guys met, or were ISO certified. And it's a new standard to come out for county, well, for local government. And there's all these measures and metrics and such. You look at any model, you know, they're measuring many different facets of community health. And the strange thing about how American government is set up is that local governments are not, they may be responsible in some way for certain portions of those metrics, you know, crime rate or something like that, like, et cetera, but they're not accountable for it. And so it sounds like what you're trying to propose is something that takes the responsible entities and breaks them into one conversation so that there can be a level of accountability and clearance, if you would.
Right.
I think there's a lot of wisdom in that. It's clearly a gap, something we've talked about often over the years. It's encouraging to see the WCCBI taking a leap on that, filling that vacuum. So in about a month, well, now three weeks, I think we go before the city to present a budget, a very clear staffing plan, and, and our charter of how we plan to execute. It won't be written in stone because we wanted to be collaborative. But we'd like to come back and present the same to you in time to meet, you know, your budgetary process for 2024. So that we're positioned to go into the new year, hand in hand, working on this project with you. I'm glad you're here. It's great to see you.
Yeah, you just picked off our button here. Typically, we're supposed to begin at one, but then apparently it began at noon.
Wow.
Early bird gets hungry.
Yeah.
You got it at the gate, then. All right, anything else you would be interested in sharing? Thank you for your time today.
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just encouraged now. I mean, I've been back in Warren for, what, 25 years now? The energy that's back in the community, it's, it's a great place to be right now. I think we've got a lot of good things going on, a lot of good momentum. And this has been very well received up to this point. I just think we can do a lot of good, so.
And I think, you know, that said, I think I mentioned earlier, you know, the Commonwealth is also trying to use recreation and tourism as an economic driver to the, to the degree that we can tap into that and help become part of the solution in our community with the resources and the assets we have, that would be, would be great to do. So I don't know in what role they would play in any of that, but certainly there's a connection.
For sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, hon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse my cords.
But you're good.
I'm just going to sing aloud.
One and a half.
Yeah. So I think we were going to modify the new business by removing the removal of trees in the parking lot and adding two. in the parking lot and adding to that a proposal that has been brought up by Penn, I believe, Capital Area Communications, Warren County subscriber contact.
Just to go back, what was the three trees for the parking lot? Sheriff's Office, Parks and Trees. At least my perspective, because it's an administrative decision, it doesn't...
This is, uh, what is the sheriff's line?
Where the park could park.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, so this is a quote from Capital Area Communications. Make your way here.
So in the past, as we had what we call subscriber unit, the units that go in police cars around police officer fells or the ones we use in public safety, those have always been under a maintenance agreement. However, when we went over to P.A. StarNet, we had a warranty period, and that warranty period is set to expire December 31st. Collaborated with the other directors in that, in the past, everybody would go after their own agreement with a vendor and wrangled everybody together. Everybody was in agreement, why don't we just have one maintenance agreement? I'll manage it. We'll make sure everybody's equipment is on there. I sent them a statement of work, what's covered under that agreement as well, and it ends up being $100 and $120 per mobile radio. Those are the radios that go in like police cars and fire trucks. And then it was, is that same answer?
Ninety-six for the portable.
Yeah.
And then how we could reconcile this.
Correct.
And when you say everybody, who's everybody?
So this will be do not probation.
Okay.
Adult probation.
Okay, all the probation.
Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
That will also be the district attorneys, like the Tom Kiddies of the world.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and the district attorneys have some portable radios as well, there's a radio on the street park, and then our Department of Public Safety radios.
Okay.
As well as any spares that we have. We originally always had a couple that are going into repair, there's some spare radios that have come into service.
From what I remember, what we paid for was about the same or...
I think it was, I think it was double that.
Yeah, I think that's what you paid alone.
Right.
Maybe you got all the other departments, so this is a...
Yeah, we were able to get it under state contract, and then we were going to include Rusty Barr in this as well, but he just purchased all this stuff new, so he has a warranty period.
Okay.
So down the road, we took one.
One and two.
But it just doesn't make sense for everybody to negotiate their own contract.
Never did, no.
So...
Well, thanks for taking the gold remarks.
Sure. We have a breakdown for Director Ever of whose portion of the bill we're...
Okay, all right. And it looks like this is expiring October, so this isn't where you're waiting until the new budget season.
I'm sure they would rewrite it if you needed them to, but I've noticed they got me signing it instead of you. That's one correction I'm going to have.
You don't have to.
Okay.
Not by nature, already.
But I just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask questions if you had any. I'll look for you.
I would have a row to go there on, if I want to say. Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Well, it's like, you know, we want that to begin in October, we would want to do that before the month begins.
They actually have touch radios coming up till the new year, right?
It's, yeah, preventative maintenance in the 2024 year.
So the whole calendar, 2024.
Yeah, well, I haven't run it. I've done all my agreements calendar year since I've started.
Okay, very good. So this would be 2020?
This would start off, yeah, that would be the 2024.
Okay. As something we just do as part of the budget? How is this? Doesn't matter.
I just thought it was, yeah, I thought it was different because we had never collaborated all the different entities together, and I just wanted to make sure the commissioners understood why.
Perfect. Okay, very good.
Do you have an agreement?
This is just a proposal. It has a, on the back, it has a word for it.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we call, that's a statement of work.
So it is, that's what, it is an agreement.
Yep.
Okay. Updates on policies or procedures? Look like there's anything under that for the work session. Projects? We have not yet seen anything come out as far as the applications for funding for broadband. The next step of that process would be any provider challenges, so we're still waiting to see what's going to occur, relates to Warren County and those number of proposals that were put in on our behalf. So our meeting on the 27th, we're going to get a reassessment update. Looks like our proclamations, committee claiming one, and fire prevention.
Just to go back to the projects, Pam didn't even know me about it, so I was going to discuss the renovation project, like, we should be vetting that in October, I believe. So I'm going to follow up with Pam today or tomorrow just to discuss the timeline of that with the architect and everything.
Okay, and your reason for, I'd say, is it's still...
Yeah, I mean, they've already done all the work, I would say.
Okay.
They just, we just need to work with them to...
Revet it.
Put, you know, put the timeline together, because I'm assuming they'll have another walkthrough and blah, 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 so.
Okay. All right, we do the project items. All right, so it looks like under new business, we got the comprehensive plan that's going to get approved, air housing resolution, and then the armor construction agreement for the 20-year testing on the sprinkler system. And then I'm assuming we're going to add to the agenda the Capital Area Communications proposal. And it doesn't sound like we heard anything from WCCBI's equipment. I guess that's just a war to come. We'll get that to you and part of your budget season.
Yeah, I think they said that they would put out a more piece. I'm assuming that they'll use that to determine what they think their budget will be.
Okay, any other comments? On the meeting stuff? Thank you.